What we introduce is the United States of America into a republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the Secretary to take a roll call attendance, please.
Here.
Mr. Fecchi.
Here.
Mr. Zerou.
Here.
Mr. Pratikas.
Here.
Mr. Moudaoui.
Here.
Mr. Flora. Here. Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from the May 6 meeting. Let me get a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made, seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening is adjourned public hearing for Zamiello two lot subdivision. Need a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Seconded.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there anyone here regarding the Zamiello subdivision? Okay, seeing that there's no one here tonight, need a motion to adjourn the public hearing to a future date.
I'll make the motion to adjourn it.
Oh, we gotta pick a date. Being the applicant's not here, we should probably give him some time. We put this off to the August 5 meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, so you amended your motion. Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion. Okay, so we adjourn this now to the August 5. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding Flint Rolls and Leepore subdivision. You get a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Well, seconded. Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Jay Samuelson, Engineering Properties, here representing the applicants. What we're proposing here is a two-part application. There are two existing lots. There is a 9.9 acre lot and approximately 1.6 acre lot. The action number one is to take a small strip from the nine acre lot and add it to the 1.6 acre lot to make it a conforming lot for a lot width. Right now, it's a little bit short. The second proposal is to subdivide out one lot out of the remaining 9.9 acre lot, which would be a two acre lot. The existing lot does have an existing dwelling that will be removed. The existing lot has been approved by the Dutchess County Health Department in regards to the septic, and the existing lot that will get the additional area also has previously been reviewed and approved by the Dutchess County Health Department. The new lot is currently under review. So in the end, we will have three lots out of the two. It'll be one that'll be roughly seven and a half acres and two that'll be roughly two acres apiece.
Okay. All right. This time, we'll open the floor to public comment. If there's anyone that has any questions.
Yes, I have a question.
Please stand at the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Emily Ellison. I live at 8th Spring Street in Chelsea 12512. The question would be approximately how many residences will there be when the project is completed? So the one house is going down, you're raising the one house. The proposal is that there would be two or three houses.
Okay, go ahead, you can answer the question.
There'll be three when we're done. There's two vacant lots. I guess one of them is not vacant, it has an old house that's kind of falling down, so, but there is nobody living there. That lot will be raised with a new house built on it, and a new lot will be created, and the other existing lot will also have a house put on. So it'll be three when we're done.
Okay, and the driveways would be coming out onto River Road?
Yes, addressed to the board, but yes, there will be, there'll be three driveways.
Onto River Road.
There'll be three, right, onto River Road.
And are those new residences going to make use of city water?
They're private, it's private water, so it's a well and something.
Okay. All right, let's see what else. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay.
But the driveways would come onto River Road.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else that has any questions, comments regarding the subdivision? Okay. So while we have you here, I think there's a few things I think that we need to go over from some of the previous meetings. Actually, the one item I know we do have is the, regarding a marker for the site. We did get the information regarding the historical structure that's there, and it's going to be taken down. But there was a request that was brought up at the, it was the previous meeting, to put a plaque out by the road.
Okay.
You know, naming, you know, the, showing the historical site and, you know, just so it's visible from the roadway. I believe that's still part of the plan, is to provide that?
We will provide that, yes.
Okay. All right. And you'll submit that before the final approval for the project?
Yes, we'll submit, showing the plan, showing that, and what the sign will look like.
Okay.
Is it going to be a wood plaque that you're planning, or a metal?
I would do it similar with the other historic plaques around the area with the metal.
Good.
Yes.
So, the board had a discussion during the workshop, and the planning board secretary can forward you the information. There's a foundry called Catskills. They used to do the old New York State Department of Education signs, and they still have the old time signs. They're made out of aluminum, so we can forward you some information. And there's a selection off the website, so we can get you that information, so that it looks like, you know, the typical historical type of sites. And the one thing is, I think we should probably maybe coordinate with the town historian regarding, you know, the lettering, the lettering on the plaque.
The wording?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think there's a limit, it's either three or four lines.
The engineering's are all good?
Engineering's good.
Okay.
We're good.
David, you're good also?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so at this point, if there's...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah. We get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. So, being that everything has been taken care of, we get a motion to go ahead and authorize the planner to write a resolution for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded.
And that would be preliminary and final.
Preliminary and final, correct, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so we'll vote upon that once it's been written, probably in a future meeting.
Okay.
All right?
We can do that for the next meeting if you'd like.
Will be the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
June 17.
Okay.
Can I take it outside? Yeah, fine.
Do you know the date of this, did this date, June 17?
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding NERP Holding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store.
Good evening, my name is Alec Glad, I'm an attorney at Cuddy &amp; Fader. We're joined tonight by Jim Cassidy, the project engineer, the project applicant, Matthew Darling. We were last before your board on April 15, where we presented a preliminary concept plan of shared access with Acura. We have since executed a shared access agreement with them, and revised and submitted drawings showing that shared access, as well as incorporating other comments from your consultants, which Jim will go over in detail in a second. But we've also been proceeding before the ZBA, seeking our parking variance. We've submitted data from other stores showing that the amount of parking spaces we're questing is really all that is necessary. We've also initiated our process before the Town Board of seeking the sewer and water district extensions. We've received your consultants' comment memos. Jim, I believe, has one in response to your planners, which he will go over. And also, at the end of this, we're hoping with these project changes and the submission that we've made, that we're ready to move forward on the seeker process, and also hopefully set a public hearing. So I'll turn it over to Jim.
So, good evening, for the record, my name's Jim Cassidy, I'm federal engineer in principle with the firm of Halsey Pearson &amp; Cassidy. So since last time before you, as Alec Glad had mentioned, we've been working on coming up with an agreement for the development of the Tractor Supply Site, where we had shared access with the Acura dealer that's to the north. The area outlined in yellow is the site that we're looking at developing. Then the two buildings off to the north are the Acura dealership. One of the issues that came up in the review process initially, with the initial design, is that you have the access on the northerly end of the Acura dealership, and then they have this exit driveway on the southerly end, and their driveway actually comes over onto our property through an easement. We were trying to tee in to the side of it. There was concern about conflicting traffic, someone coming into our site, crossing that driveway, and vice versa, someone leaving our site and conflicting with the exiting traffic from the Acura dealership. So, negotiations back and forth with Acura, what we've been able to do is have them agree to basically take the curb cut that they presently have. They're going to eliminate it, and in turn, rather than having this access to the front, we're going to build a new shared access driveway with a new curb cut, primarily in the same location as the existing curb cut. And in turn, what we're going to do is provide them a new driveway between the two buildings that they have, so the dealership to the front and the service area to the back, there's a drive aisle between the two. That drive aisle will line up with it, which will line up with the drive aisle along the front of our store. That will provide them access through this drive aisle, and then out this shared access driveway, getting rid of that conflict. We would then square off the front corner of their parking lot, remove the existing pavement, reestablish a lawn within a cross-statch area. In this back area, we'd also be squaring off a portion of the parking area here. Right now, the topography between the two, the grade is higher on our site, so we're going to be, we're going to be regrading between the two sites, providing a uniform grade between the two sites. What you'd find with this revision, the proposed parking count that we originally had is exactly the same. We're looking at a total of 77 spaces, 60 out to the front, 17 to the back. Zoning regulations require we have a total of 258, so as Alec had mentioned, we're before ZBA, requesting a variance of 51 parking spaces. We provide documentation for several, actually five, Tractor Supplies in New York State. We find that all of them are in that range of about 77 parking spaces, and it's more than adequate, so we hopefully are going to get the support of the zoning board to receive that variance. This basically is, this is a photo overlay of our proposed site, showing the new shared access. So this area outlined in yellow would be the easement between the two pieces. This green area would be the portion of the driveway that's eliminated, so it's one driveway out, primarily in the same location as the existing driveway curb cut today. What we found in talking to Acura is the way their traffic circulates, the majority of the traffic comes in this driveway and actually goes to the back. They get more service customers than they do sales customers, so that's when we came up with the idea, rather than having them go back up along the building and back out that curb cut, they're better off coming through our shared access driveway and out the same curb cut location. Any people going to sales would still be able to pull into the front parking area, but in turn, if they want to get to the shared access driveway, they come down along the south side of the building, where there'd be a stop sign, and they can intersect with the shared access driveway on this location. But otherwise, the overall site plan remains the same. As I mentioned before ZBA, one of the things we demonstrated is if Tractor Supply were to move out, and a more intense retail use such as a pharmacy were to move in, because of the concrete pad that we have out back for outdoor display of larger products, that retail operation could convert that area to parking spaces. So this plan demonstrates with the removal of the fence, leaving the concrete pad, we can easily accommodate additional 51 spaces, bringing this to the whole, the total of 200, sorry, 128 spaces as required. No additional parking towards the front portion of the site. The other thing that's changed, as we went through the review process, there was a request, sorry, that we changed the front facade of the building. If you remember, the original front facade had a gable roof with quarter gated metal siding on the front portion of it. We've eliminated that, we've gone to a gambrel roof, so it's more similar to the end of a barn. This would stick out about 10 feet from the face of the building. What we've done is we put some, we're columns, or block columns, to match the block of the bottom portion of the building, and then there would be actually hardy plank columns above that to support the structure with angled brackets, to once again look more like the farming theme. In addition to, we're proposing to add some faux barn windows across the front of the building, so there's a total of six of the faux barn windows. The other thing I'd like to point out, when we get into the comments section, one of the comments is that we need to screen the dumpster enclosure. If we go back on the site plan, what you'd find is that we do have a dumpster that is outside. It is located on a concrete pad off to the north side of the building, along with the loading ramp. What we wanted to do was screen this, and rather than using just a regular screened enclosure, we didn't think that would provide ample screening. So what we actually did is we extended the front facade of the building, 30 feet, for the toll, the whole height of the wall of 20 feet 8 inches, rather than using a chain link enclosure. Our concern was, if you're standing here looking down from the road, because of the elevation change from the road, you'd actually be looking down over the screen, the regular scheme enclosure, dumpster enclosure, and be looking on top of the dumpster. Therefore, we thought the extension of the wall, so this portion here is the extension of the wall, would do a better job in screening the loading area and the dumpster enclosure. The other thing we went to talk a little bit about is on the landscaping plan. There were several comments on the landscaping plan. This is the last version of the landscaping plan that accompanied the revised site plan. There was a request that we add additional landscaping along Route 9. What we're hoping for is if we put some additional landscaping in this area, that we can do something lower, some type of lower shrub. Our concern is with the building being so far off the road, if you take a look at the fountain front wall location, it's at the same front wall location as the service area for Acura, so it's pretty far back off the road. And the concern was by planting larger trees along the frontage, our visibility is already restricted to the front of this building. We'd like to keep something open so we can have some visibility as we look back to Route 9. So those are the major changes that happened to the plan. We did receive comments from staff, I believe from engineering, all the comments have been addressed at this point. We did receive some planning comments. Unfortunately, I believe there was a memo that went out in March 31 of this year, but unfortunately, I never received the copy, so we did receive another memo as of this Friday. I have written a response letter, and was hoping to go through the comments, and hopefully address them with the commission, and see if we're satisfied. I have copies of my response letter, if the members of the commission staff would like it, or I can just go through them individually if you prefer.
So there was a letter, you said, from March 31?
I believe there's a review letter from March 31, I don't...
That was from, from, from the town, or from the consultants?
From the consultants. Correct?
So was there a meeting just after that?
I believe there's a meeting just after that, yeah, correct.
And you didn't get one at the meeting either?
No. No.
March 1?
It was March 31, I believe, right?
This one's from March 1. I thought that was from March 1.
Yeah, which I hadn't...
You got one?
Yeah, I got yours, and that's what we had revised the plans to. So if you'd like, I have a copy of my response letter to these comments, so I can go through them with you.
Okay, I'm not sure that I did receive it.
I think we, didn't we have a meeting and refer to that at all?
I don't believe so. I just saw this, this other review letter as of Friday, the one from March 31. So anyways, well, I mean, a lot of the comments, I believe in that one, have been addressed by revisions we made to the plan.
I don't know, I mean...
I have March 1 and March 15. I have March 3, but you have nothing.
And whose letter is that be?
Yours.
Okay.
But more importantly, we did receive their, their response comments?
I have it here.
So you never submitted those to us?
No, I just had to do it over the weekend.
Okay, that helps too, because we, I don't remember seeing the response.
No, it's, we, you know, we did get the latest memo towards the end of last week, so I've been working over the weekend to respond to these comments. I can go through them individually if you'd like. I believe the majority of them are addressed, other than a few straggling comments, but I'm sure we can work with staff to address any remaining comments they may have.
Okay. Normally, when the, when you respond to the comments, you email them to the secretary. She would then turn, disperse it to everybody that needs to, and that, we had a discussion earlier, there was a little confusion, you know, regarding whether or not things had been addressed or not. But if they haven't been submitted to us, and we weren't, we weren't able to discuss the, of the outstanding items.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, we received the plans without any cover letter, and it was clear that the driveway was...
Correct.
So I wrote a quick letter, actually over the weekend myself, showing my support.
Yeah, I got that, I appreciate that. But again, you know, I went through these, and I do not, maybe the consultant planner can reply, but I didn't see anything earth shattering that we can't deal with here, so I gladly, you know, sit down with the staff and go through these remaining comments, but hopefully, we can, you know, move forward and move on to a neg deck on this application.
Okay, I don't think we're in a position yet to go...
Well, the one issue that we discussed regarding the neg deck, because this is going to have an impact on the Acura property, we, for purposes of segmentation, the neg deck would have to cover both, or is this unlisted?
It's unlisted, but we have to cover both sites. So I think what Jim is leading up to, is that we need an application from Acura for at least a portion of their property that's going to change, so that we can cover both of these under the one seeker umbrella with a neg deck. Sorry. So we were just, yeah, that's actually one of the questions that we had. So we are showing on the plans that we've submitted, all the changes that we're making to the Acura dealership property, and we have an authorization from them that we can readily provide to the town that was part of our shared access agreement. So we were wondering if it would be sufficient enough for us to put that, our plan sheet with the Acura file, and that would also cover the changes being made to the Acura site, because frankly, what we would submit really wouldn't be any different than already what we've shown you, other than also providing their authorization for us to pursue this application. Right, so you need two things, basically, and I have no problem with using the one site plan for the two sites, unless someone else has an objection. But we need an application submitted, with appropriate signatures and fees and that kind of thing, because Acura is now applying to change their site plan as well, as part of this. And if there are any, if there's going to be any signage, pavement markings, you know, traffic control signage, traffic control pavement markings on Acura that you're not showing on this, we need to see that. If there's going to be landscaping in the new islands you're creating as part of the joint access, we need to see that. So it needs to be full for both sides. Not that, not that you need to show the entire Acura site, but it needs to be complete for both sides. Yeah, no, we understand. And also, we understand that your process is to have the board authorize you to prepare a negative declaration. So, we could probably turn that around within the week, and your next meeting is on the 17, and we're scheduled to be back before the ZBA on the 25th. We've had, they've adjourned the public hearing a couple times, we've been there two or three times, we've submitted some supplemental submissions. So we were hoping that we could have the board authorize the preparation of a neg deck, if we can make the changes in time. And just because it's authorized to be prepared, doesn't mean you have to adopt it at your next meeting, if everything's not in, but we would just like the option, if we can, so we can keep proceeding before the ZBA, and not get pushed into July, before that board. Do you have any feedback from the DOT yet?
No, not yet, but I mean, this is what they were looking for, because a lot of this change was based upon their initial review.
Do you feel you have enough to fore neg deck at this point?
Well...
For an approval, if the board, you know, does approve that?
Do you have any feedback from the DEC yet?
Yes, that was, that, yeah, and the submission that we're, we'll have due tonight.
They said they don't have jurisdiction over the wetlands on the site.
Okay, how about the Indiana Bat?
What's that?
Indiana Bat?
Yeah, we realize it's on the site, and DEC says, you know, as we talked before, we have to wait until we're outside of the 14 season.
Okay, well, assuming that, and hopefully, we were not part of, you're not getting the review memo, sorry about that.
No, I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody.
I know, I know. I think if there, now you have a letter, have you modified the plans in accordance with our memo?
Everything's been modified, other than, I have, there was one question I sent to you about the landscape percentage, and then my landscape architect, I didn't want to put it on a last minute and have him change the entire plan, so on our plans, everything has been changed, other than the landscaping, but changing calibers of trees and adding additional trees.
I think based upon these representations, we have enough now to prepare the neg deck for the next planning board meeting.
Okay, so you have sufficient information at this point?
Well, I, I...
You're gonna have...
I trust we do.
As long as they submit all their paperwork.
I think we should, yeah, we should, yeah. I think you may want to have a public hearing, elicit more comment, I think, to issue a neg deck, and then have the public hearing is sort of putting the cart before the horse.
Do the public hearing first.
Yeah. You don't want to foreclose the idea of getting important comments.
Yeah.
On seeker.
So more, more importantly than is, do we have, do we have enough, is this plan sufficient to go ahead and submit for a public hearing, if we schedule one?
I think that, assuming the plans have been modified, I think we've probably enough, yes.
I mean, the one thing that I think would be helpful, if we could get, if possible, some feedback from the New York State DOT.
I'll make sure we have that prepared in this meeting.
Yeah, that would be the big holdup, that's the only real change from the last plan, for the most part.
So we could work on a draft neg deck, and depending upon the outcome of the public hearing, you would either feel comfortable... hearing, you would either feel comfortable adopting it, or you would put it off for further modifications?
Okay, so the first item, I guess, we have to do is have the public hearing, and then it's just a matter of how much time we need to allow prior for, that's, how much time do we need to give them in order to send out registered letters? We could do it for the 17th? There's enough time, okay. On 17th or 15th?
The 17th.
Is it 17th?
17th.
All right, I have the wrong date written now, that's why. Okay. That's what I was looking at. Okay. All right. So at this point, I guess we go ahead and see if the board wants to schedule a public hearing for June the 17th, for this project. Need to get a motion?
Submit.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
So, at this point, well-
Yeah.
Just a couple of other little things.
Do you want a draft of a neg deck for that evening, or would you feel more comfortable seeing how the public hearing goes and what comes out of the public hearing? I know.
All right, what's everybody's, what's the rest of the board's opinion on that? Do you want to go ahead and have them draft the neg deck for the, for the next meeting?
Well, if there's any changes, you can't make them then, right?
No, we'd have to, well, they'd have to be modified, unless it's a minor change.
I think, if you hear some new information at the public hearing that you haven't heard before, that would affect the seeker process, affect the negative declaration, you could put off adopting it that night.
Then you can add whatever you have to add.
We can modify it for the following meeting or the meeting after that, or whatever.
So-
Then I don't have a problem with having it ready for after the public-
So we basically have to authorize them to go ahead and write the negative declaration based upon the information that's been submitted to us at this time.
Do you think one meeting for that is as sufficient for the public hearing?
We can, we can do it for the next meeting, and depending upon how the public hearing goes, if you, if you adjourn it that night to another evening, you would not issue the neg deck, I would think.
Okay.
Play it by ear.
So, is there a motion on the floor to authorize the planner to write a draft?
I'll make that motion to authorize it.
Okay. The motion's been made. Second's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We're not done.
I think we gotta, no, we do have a couple of quick questions regarding the Acura site plan.
Thank you very much.
So regarding the Acura site plan that's been added. All right, thank you. So regarding the site plan for Acura, I mean, we're talking about just the, that little corner piece, you know, to be, you know, that's gonna be changed. But also, we're looking to get some more information regarding the traffic flow on their property now, because you're gonna be changing the exiting, how it's gonna be proposed for the traffic flow, signage to be provided, and also how they're gonna maintain fire lanes through the property, so that, you know, emergency vehicles can access easily through the property. We were discussing that earlier. So I know that they brought up about proposing separate application, but at least those things have to be put on there at a minimum.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Is there anything, anything I might have missed that the rest of the board had questions with?
Well, we had mentioned the trailers. How many trailers were originally proposed? When we had discussed this back in March, January, whenever it was, how many trailers did you, did we agree on? Because I don't recall ever asking-
The whole front.
Yeah, that's what you asked for, but what did we settle on? Because I don't remember it being three.
So typically, we have a space for 15 trailers. That was originally on the plan and along the front of the site. We cut it back to three, three individual pads, and then we put the 15 to the rear of the site.
So we don't have, do we have a record up agreeing to three on this, or?
There's three areas shown on the plan, three pads shown on the plan. Each pad can accommodate one trailer.
So we don't have actually agreement on that yet?
No.
Okay. Because I think three is a little excessive still, considering that I think two is more sufficient, and I'd like to see some kind of landscaping around that, to dress it up a little bit.
We can accommodate that.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, so that's all we have at this point in time.
Good, thank you.
So we'll see for the, for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is Red Cedar Arborist and Landscapers Contractor Yard.
Hi.
Good evening.
Shells are for the burger engineering. Okay, no shells are for the burger engineering. And I'm here, we're here before you tonight to give you an update on where the project is with the other boards. On Monday, this will be the public hearing for the town board for rezoning. And then the next day, Tuesday the 11th, will be the ZBA public hearing for the area variance, for the improved entrance. The architect is here to explain to you how he's designed the entrance. It's a little different than what you saw for several months. And then I'd also like, if possible, if we, if you could authorize Mr. Stolman's office to prepare the final conditional for the next meeting. And while you're thinking about that, I'll turn it over to the architect to go over what the proposed changes are from the original that you saw for several months.
All right, if he wants to kind of go through the presentation. We just received it tonight.
I know, that's, I'm not asking it to, to make a, I'm not expecting the architectural review thing tonight. He's just gonna briefly go over what the changes were. We're gonna be back in two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand. It's just architectural review this evening for the project. I mean, we did discuss it earlier. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant regarding the, regarding the proposal that we just looked at earlier?
Well, I think it's actually nicer than the one they were done before.
Yeah. And obviously, this is gonna carry, they're gonna re-side the building down the two sides of the building, or is it just strictly to the, just a portion of the front section?
I'm Dan Quinton, the architect. Okay. Now, we were only adding new siding to return eight feet on both sides.
Yeah. So it's gonna go down both sides, all the way to the back?
No, you're saying eight feet back.
This is the existing siding?
Okay.
That would remain. The new siding turns the corner and stops-
And it just stops.
Eight feet back, right, to catch the door on the side and on the other side.
Match and color and everything?
Which?
The siding going down the sides. It's all gonna match, it's the same siding?
We can't go down the sides, or we just, we're gonna, we wanted to keep a little bit of an industrial look, so we wanted to maybe redo it in the galvanized steel downsides. So we would probably redo it, we would redo it, but not in the board and batten. We were gonna switch material. What do you think, Dan? Yeah, well, that's what's existing now.
Okay, so the existing's gonna remain?
Yes, on this side, and then the other side has to be redone. So we were thinking more of the galvanized metal than board and batten.
Okay, so you're gonna replace that one side?
Yeah, it has to be.
I think it's the, the west side of the building? I think that's the one that's in pretty bad shape?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So you're gonna replace that with-
With either board and batten, the way the front looks, or galvanized corrugated metal, the way it is now. We're kind of trying to keep that industrial look that, you know, a mix, right down to the residential in the front, but then a kind of industrial look down the side.
Okay. Board have any comments regarding that?
This is the colors. They're gonna remain?
This is, actually, this is the color that we had, that we were proposing, which is the actual paint color. You know, when you're doing a rendering, this has a little bit of a yellow glow to it, depending on the way it prints, angle of the sun. We can literally change the angle and the color changes. But this was the color that we were proposing for the front. And the arbors would be basically cut from, potentially like a locust, you know, but loft, but chunks of wood. So there would be big beams in the two different colors.
Okay, so it's a happy, actual natural wood with a, with stain on it?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Any questions?
No, I like it.
Very good.
Good.
Okay, I mean, what, what you proposed, everybody kind of agrees to, so I think that's, you know, that's what's being proposed to the zoning board for the setback and everything.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That'd be nice. I don't know what we do to, I'm not gonna, are they gonna act?
Sure.
Right.
Any questions?
What just came up was whether there should be some landscaping in front of, maybe some low landscaping in front of the building.
We do have some. So instead of showing the rendering with the landscaping, basically, you know, covering the bottom of it, we didn't show that. But we have, we're proposing on the site plan where there would be landscaping on either side of the window, so that if you park over here, come to the front door, you'd actually walk under the arbor to the front door, there'd be a low shrub row in front of that as well. So it would soften the bottom of the, of the arbor posts across the front. And if you're sitting on a bench, you have a little bit buffer to the road.
Okay, that, that would be good. All right. Any other, the only concern, David?
Well, we haven't really looked at the plan, so-
Okay.
We don't see anything at the moment, but we'll take a look.
Okay, so I mean, what's presented, I believe the rest, the rest of the board's fine with it. That's, you know, acceptable for, you know, for the project, to address the, you know, addressing it, that we had a concern with at the last meeting. So other than that, I guess it's, there's really nothing else for us to do. I mean-
Are you gonna put a business sign on this building at all, stating the name of the business?
There's two posts out on the road.
That's, you're not putting anything on the building?
Not on this building. Not right now. In a year from now, I'll come back.
Well, it'd be better to show it now than it would be to come through this process again. Does he have to put it on if he shows it?
Does he have to put the sign up?
If he shows it now, does he have to put it up?
No, no.
The sign would be on two posts out on the road, so if any lettering or sign were on this, I'd have to think about that.
Come back.
So if we, I'd have to think about signs on that building, on that barn.
Because I think it'd be better, yeah, show it now and put it up later.
I'd rather it not be a big sign on the building. It's just something to direct somebody to where they're going. Yeah, I didn't really picture it, you know, I never put kind of too much, too much words on the side.
Okay.
We'll take a vote regarding the architectural, architectural view of the front of the building. As it's, as it's been presented, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the presented design?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made in second. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so motion carries. All right. So in terms of drafting for final resolution, David, do you feel you have, we have, everything's been taken care of?
Assuming the rezoning takes place, and assuming you get your variance, I think we have enough.
You have enough information. Everything's good on your end? Okay. All right, so at this point, we get a motion to approve the planner to draft a resolution for approval?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion's made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And of course, it's subject to getting the rezoning and-
Right, pending, right, correct. Pending the rezoning and the town board zoning approval.
And the, and the variance.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, yes. Yes, you are. I was just making some notes. The next item on the agenda is St. Gregory's Church for an extension.
We're very grateful that you're taking the time to hear us again. I think your notes indicate that we, I'm Father Alex Vinogradov. I was the rector at St. Gregory's. I retired in 2015, and I thought we'd go ahead with the project, but we had just, it was costing more than-
I need you, sorry. I keep forgetting, you need to speak into the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm Father Alexis Vinogradov. I was the former rector, retired in 2015, and at the time, we were looking to, to build this as the final kind of piece on, on phase one, to have this entrance portico. Currently, let me bring the models so I can explain. Currently, we have, this, this represents part of the front of the church that runs all the way back. The lower entryways here, these parts are in place. What we have right now is just a small awning over an upper landing to get into the church. And it's a very difficult entryway to use, especially with bringing coffins into the church in wintertime and so on. So really no protection, it's a very steep stair. So our application was to remove the existing landing and staircase and build a much gentler descent with two landings, instead of a seven and a half and 10 rise, which is what we have now, to do it in a six and 12, a much more gradual descent, and a little one on the side. So it's easier to bring caskets down from the church, easier way to enter, to dress it up with shrubbery and the masonry walls, and then to put a canopy over the whole thing to protect it. We formerly had a little bell tower on top of the church, and in the phase one work, we removed that bell tower to redo the roofing. So we still have that one single bell, and so the portico incorporates a small structure in here where we could return that ship's bell to the front of the church. So we had already, as I say, applied- So we had already, as I say, applied for the project. We graciously received the approval of the... Planning Board, and, but we had to delay it because we weren't able to afford the project, and there were other priorities that came up, and there was a new rector coming in, we had to deal with a rectory, and bringing everything up to shape. So now we're kind of back on go, we'd like to continue and complete this project, so we're asking essentially for an extension to, to perform the work.
Okay. So basically, so we're looking to vote on the extension to approve for a one-year extension from June, oh, it's probably the wrong part. So looking to seek retroactive extension from June 14, 2016, extend to June 13 of 2020.
We would be prepared to actually begin to do the construction this summer, if we receive approval, so it would be completed by June, certainly of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, probably, probably by the fall of this year.
All right, so at this point, I need a motion to approve the extension of one year.
So...
Motion's made in second, it all in favor?
If, if you would just, for the record, put the date...
Retroactive to?
To six-month extensions?
No, it's, there's no requirement on site plan, the, the...
Okay.
That's a limitation on subdivision. So for the board's knowledge, extension says, "An application for extension of site plan approval shall be made by the applicant, made by the applicant to the planning board prior to the expiration of the specific time period sought to be extended. The planning board may extend all time limits for good cause showed, if it deemed such extension warranted." So the board in the past has entertained retroactive applications, which this is, and the board has the authority to do that, but I think just the start and the...
Right, okay, so just to reword, just to reword the resolution?
So it would be...
From June 14th to June...
To start from June 14, 2016.
June 14, retroactively, starting June 14, 2016, to end June 13, 2020. Because there's no requirement or a code as to the length of the time for the extension.
So who made the, the motion was made by, okay, so you're going to amend your motion?
I hereby amend my motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, so we know what we're doing, are we okay then to proceed with applying for a building permit?
Yes, you can, yes. You go ahead and start working.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, is there any other business that needs to be brought in front of the board this evening? Okay, seeing that there's no other business that needs to be brought, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion's made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
If you don't mind, this is my last planning board meeting.
Yes.
I'm leaving the firm, going to work over at Orange County, DPW, beginning two weeks from today. Pete Sotaro from our office will be taking my place here at the meetings, he's a professional engineer, I think Lewis knows him, and I think great work will be done.
Sam here. Sam here.